We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. If you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon, folks. The first order of business is to go into executive session. Can I wait a motion?
I move to go into executive session.
I want MRS A four oh five six E consultant with legal counsel.
All right, second that. So you're making a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, so signify. So we are in executive session at three sixteen. By our lawyer, Will.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion, so signify. Thank you. All right, so we're not going to go into executive session for the other two at this time?
Yep, till the end.
So we'll just move into clerk's report.
So you should have the minutes from
Yeah, right here.
The last meeting and amended minutes from the meeting before. So the last meeting you had signed minutes, but there were some discrepancies in number three under Ratcliffe in terms of moving funds. So I made that more clear about where the funds are coming from, so I needed to re-sign those.
Okay, and thanks for sending those via email.
Sure.
Saves time, because I can read them.
I make a motion, we accept the clerk's reports, both of them finished, January eighteenth and February first.
I second the motion. Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor. Done. Okay, that's your treasurer's report.
First of all, I want to mention, we found out yesterday, Vicky and I and the rest of us here, that the auditor has completed the audit for the financial statements for twenty twenty-one, that was last June. And the timing is that we actually have an electronic version of it right now, a PDF. So I'd be happy to email that to any of you who want it. And the auditor's office is also going to send the bound copy. Just so you remember, the bound copy, you know, on paper. If you would like to have that, I can get that to you or have you pick it up at the next meeting, however you want it, because you don't usually read things on the screen.
No, no.
And the other commissioners?
Yeah, if you could send that via email.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Happy to do that. That's what I did the last time.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Harville, would you like to get a PDF or both?
Just PDFs, okay. Trying to save the trees.
There's also some correspondence that goes with the audited financial statement. And one of them is a routine letter that always comes with an audited financial statement, where the auditor provides information about what they did. I think it may be three pages. The other letter is called the management letter, and it points out certain accounting policies which they try to alert us to, to help us fix any problems related to them, so that we can improve our accounting practices and transparency. The management letter is actually addressed to the commissioners. So I will include that too, and ask you to take a look at it, please. That's good news that we have that. We still have an unorganized territory audit, audited financial statements, which will come later this year, I hope. I mean, that one always comes second at some point. So that's good news that we have that, and it's completed. And I wanted to report on the warrants. There were quite a few this time, and I appreciate you signing them ahead of time while you were waiting for the meeting to get started. Commissioner Harville, did you want to sign the UT warrant? Or was there a reason you didn't?
I haven't, didn't.
No, that's okay. That's the only signature that we can sign.
Not intentional.
Thank you. And then I'll just read the list off, but I have it on paper for Tiffany, because she's taking the minutes. There were two county warrants. One was prepaid. Typically, that's from the business card, I think, to the credit card, so we don't get a late payment charge. The UT warrant, there was one. TIF warrant, there was one. And there were three payroll warrants, and part of that was payment of, would you, Diane, would you say accruals? Accruals, or so it was a smaller warrant, but you saw what they looked like. I was surprised. There were three, but there were three. And then associated with one of the payrolls, there was an EFT payment, which is an online payment that we make for the retirement account for the four fifty-seven. Also have today, which both Diane and I have been working on. She's been working on bank statements, and so am I. We work it so that she does the primary work of reconciliation, and then I check it all over, which is what a treasurer should be doing. And the one we have, the two we have, excuse me, is, one is for the unorganized territory at Scoutyden Savings Bank. And then at Bangor Savings Bank, we have the TIF, the checking account reconciled. So I'm just going to give this to Tiffany. And then finally, there's just one more thing. I haven't really been able to do everything that I would have loved to done before the meeting, but while I was waiting for the executive session, where I did print for your department the expense summary report, I didn't know if anybody had any questions about your department that you could get information off of here. And that's actually up to date as of today, including the warrants. Okay?
Good.
Just take one and pass it over. And if anybody, especially you, if you have any questions about anything, you can ask Diane or myself.
Okay?
Thank you.
Will you motion?
Make a motion, we accept the treasurer's report as reported.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Thank you. Item number three, twice old tail, permission to use the county courthouse block. Do you have a copy underneath that from their request?
Yep.
I have a question in this thing. She wants to have a fire fit, and she got permission from Chief Kenneth Charles, which is a police chief, not a fire chief. And I think that has come from a fire chief, not a police chief. And they also, a hot top, we got a hot top outfit driveway, and she's going to use a fire bowl, but it says elevated. How much elevation does it go? Because if it's hot top and the heat comes from the bottom, we'll always have a hole in the hot top.
Okay. I don't know the answer to that question, but I can certainly find out.
Did she say fire bowl?
She said a fire bowl.
Bowl, oh, gotcha.
It's a fire bowl elevated.
Elevated bowl.
But I don't know, it could be that fire.
Heat elevated bowl.
And it would heat the hot top.
Well, they, during whatever it's called now, Midnight Matters, whatever, right here in this parking lot, they always had that grill with chickens going on, the chicken cooking there with, um...
Yeah, but that's higher. That's high enough so it don't get down to the grill.
Right, I know, but I'm saying, I don't know if they had to be high, what the whole issue there was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Clyde's right. I think we ought to get that checked out by the fire chief. And to see, he sees the, he must know what they're talking about. I don't know what size bowl, or I don't really think about the particular.
Okay, so I will have her reach out.
Yeah, as long as the fire chief's fine with it, I'm fine.
Okay, you want to make a motion stating that?
I move that we just get this verified and it's okay by the fire chief.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, and we approve it if the fire chief does. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion? Good. Item number four, John Donald pay adjustment for Wyatt Haynes.
Yes. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Here we are again. I'd like to propose that we give Wyatt Haynes his one-year credit for time served, that he served in Somerset County. He's been with us about a year. He's got a year anniversary coming right up. He'll be getting bumped up. One pay step, we'd like to give him another pay step for his experience in Somerset. And he's worth every dime. He's a great catch, really is, so.
Does that follow policy, Deputy?
Well, he's under the contract, so.
Isn't that contract?
The contract we negotiated, he's under it, what she's saying.
Right, he's not under the policy handbook, is what I'm saying. So it would be, as long as this follows the contract.
That will put his hourly wage at twenty twenty-nine for basically step three.
Yeah.
I move that we move him up, accept his one year, add it into his current situation with us, and move him up to twenty twenty-nine, which is step three.
Second motion. Moved and seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Item number five.
Am I up?
You're up.
That would be you.
Lieutenant Ratcliffe, a donation to the K nine program.
Told you, I'm always bringing money in, always bringing money in.
Never asked us for a donation.
No.
The, so years ago, we had set up a K nine reserve account, where we had a lady donated five thousand dollars originally, and we had some follow-up donations. That money has long since gone as a zero balance stand, correct? Set up kind of as a zero balance. About three weeks ago, three weeks ago, I had a woman call me from the greater Rangeli area. She would like to remain anonymous. She wanted to make sure that all of our dogs here had vests, protective vests to wear. I told her that they did, we're all set on vests. I thanked her for, you know, for interest. And she wanted to know what else she could do to help the K nines be safer. And we currently have one K nine vehicle that is in the process of waiting for the vehicle to be delivered. We need a K nine insert and door popper system for that. And so I told her, I said, that's about three thousand, three five hundred dollars to cover, you know, to cover those two items. She's, in turn, said that she would like to donate four thousand dollars. So because it's a donation, it has to come before the commissioners. Commissioners have to accept the donation. So I would just like to ask that, if you're okay with that, that we receive that donation to Franklin County, and that that money be put in the K nine reserve account, which we could then use to spend that money and pay for the K nine insert and the door popper system.
Sounds like a good deal to me.
I make a motion that we go along with Lieutenant Ratcliffe.
I second the motion, and we take free stuff.
Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion, so signify. Three to zero.
I didn't know if I put the figure in there, but four thousand dollars.
Yes, yeah. No, that's what she said, so.
Yeah.
Let's protect the puppies.
Yeah. Super, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, have a good day.
Yeah.
Item number six, county operations on snow days.
Snow days.
So you guys have in front of you the original policy that's currently in the policy handbook, as well as a revised language, depending on how you decide you want to handle snow days. It's definitely not something set in stone. It's just a suggested language. It does still include, if you decided, say, we got a terrible storm that knocked out power, and there's just no way to open, and you guys had to make the call. It still does include that in there, just in case. And it also includes some language around the essential workers in the twenty-four-hour facilities, and how that doesn't, they're still expected to come to work despite closures of this building, because really, that's what it's about essentially, so. So I don't know how you guys are leaning in terms of what you want that language to look like, but we'd need a process so that everybody understands, all the employees understand, what's going to happen when snow happens, so.
I thought we already established that, no?
Well, you had mentioned you didn't want snow days, right?
Correct.
And Lance mentioned having Tim make the call. So there wasn't anything that was really, there was some conversation, but nothing was really decided. So you guys need to decide together how you want to do that. Or if you want to adopt that language that I put together, you know, you guys need to decide.
I read that, and I think it's fine. Except the part down here where the county clerk or designee will attempt to contact the department head. That's fine, but who's going to make the decision to have a snow day? I don't think it should be somebody inside here.
So I read, even with doing this, I also reached out to other counties to see what they had for a policy. And some counties decided on one of the commissioners making that decision. You could do that instead of having to have some kind of mutual agreement on that. You can designate somebody if that's...
We've been doing that in the past, because I've been making that decision.
Andy, who makes the call for the court, the other, like, the court across the street?
I think it's the scheduling justice for each region.
Okay.
That's, you know, that's my understanding of how it works.
So right now, it's the chair, right?
Yeah, correct. That's how it's been done since I've been here.
Well, I guess if you can make it up to Walker Hill on that day, you can get away.
So, but we would use that in extreme situations, right? Otherwise, we would expect to follow the other processes. Is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking.
People decide, make their own decisions on whether or not they want to travel. And if not, then they have the option to, I had put in there that they can take it unpaid, and I added sick time. I don't know if that's where you want to go with that, so.
I don't think that's correct, sick time. I don't think you can use that. I read the...
You had mentioned that you wanted to add it.
I said I made, misspoke.
Okay.
And I don't think you can add sick leave to it. So I think it has to be the approved time, vacation time.
Okay, what it was before.
Everything else except sick leave, clearly states that.
Yeah, I don't think sick leave is used for that, no.
Can a, can a department head, I haven't seen this language, so I'm just reaching out in the dark here. Can a department head say, look, work remotely? If it's a bad weather day, and we know they have all their equipment with them?
I think that has to come from the commissioners. I don't think that...
Does that allow for that, so that you can say, no, snow day, or hey, work remote if you can day?
There's nothing in there around work.
Yeah, because I have, I have one employee who, this last snow day, you know, we were informed, there's no such thing as a snow day, although the entire state was shutting down, oddly. And she was an hour and a half away, but she had her equipment with her. She could do the work. And it seems rather than have her make that trek...
That makes sense.
That just allowing her to...
So we must have a list of who can actually do this at home, right? I mean, each department head must know, right?
Well, certain. I wonder if there could be something built in, because right now, you know, I like having the emergency release, hey, you can take a vacation day, or I understand how it's a sick day. But if somebody doesn't have a vacation day, or they really have plans, and they didn't make the weather situation, but they can still do the work. I like having that option of being able to say to them, all right, keep plugging away.
Only thing I'm thinking of, man, when you start getting ice out there, right? It's not responsible to not say, hey, well, stop when I'm...
The ice, right, yeah.
What I, we're buying computers for everybody.
Well, for a certain amount of them, yes.
We are, right? So if they couldn't make it to work, they can still go on computers to do their work, because we've given them a computer.
Some would be able, some would have that ability. Like Sue decided she didn't want them for deeds, so they wouldn't be able to work from home in that situation.
Okay.
Probate would be able to, we would be able to do our work. So it wouldn't apply to everybody. We could add provisions in there that say, at the discretion of the county clerk, with the department head, you know, if...
I don't think you should do that with the department heads, because there's no sense in opening up a building. Because that's obvious what you're going to do. You're going to stay home if you have the computer. And then what's the sense of having this courthouse? Nobody's going to be here.
My sense is there's probably jobs that are more, you know, like, if you're the register of deeds, or if you're the, you know, hiding passports or whatever, you know, that's not something you can do at home, right?
Well, I agree, and you can't guard people in custody at home, so there is a line. But boy, and the other thing, though, is, you know, if I, I'm here in town, and the office needs to be opened up, I don't have any qualms saying, okay, well, I'm going to base myself out of the office. There'll be somebody at the front desk, there'll be someone to interact with. But I would like the ability to say to the employees that are living, that are working out of town, that have the longer commutes, okay, you guys, you need to work remote. You're still doing a full day's work, but you're going to be safe. So I think if, as long as the office remains open and accessible to the public, department head, county clerk, whoever you want to designate, can authorize remote work for their other employees pursuant to a request from the department head, or something like that.
Andy, you could open this with a pair's notion.
Well...
Not that far away.
Well, there you go, right?
Or it could be up to the commissioner. Whoever the commissioner is designated to all the snow day could make that decision.
The other thing is, do you want to, when you take that authority, fine, but I mean, how do you make the decision, right? Well, I mean, like a superintendent has to make a decision for the school, right?
But superintendents make that decision the night before most of the time.
No, they don't. No, not all the time, not all the time.
I can tell you, having shown up one time and getting school pants.
Well, and I'm in heart to hear, you know, one of the messages that I think the employees heard was, you know, there's no such thing as a snow day anymore. And I, I think hearing you say, no, look, we are doing an assessment. We're being realistic about it. We just want to make sure we can have folks there if it's possible, but...
That was my feeling, Andy, because when I went to high school back at Wilton Academy, we had no snow days.
Yeah.
No such thing. School never closed. And most of the time, when it did snow, we pushed cars up over the hill in town.
Yeah.
But we held class. We didn't close.
Well, and I certainly, I agree with the sentiment, look, we're a public building. We're here for the public. It's true, be as successful as possible. But you're an employer, and you're also responsible for the safety of your employees. And if it's that ice day, right, if it's the treacherous day, there's got to be a point where we say...
When I was down at CMCC at the college, and the president closed the school, and they went to the shopping center, the mall, and shopped for the rest of the day. And all the workers there, they kept complaining, because they had to work.
Right.
Yet we released all these students, so.
So I think we're getting, I think we're getting a little too caught up in the language.
I think we are too.
Because I think that the reason we're keeping, we're keeping that in there in the event that we cannot safely operate in county. So say the power goes out, we have no heat because of an ice storm of ninety-eight, for instance, and there's a situation where we just cannot work.
I understand that, and that makes perfect sense.
That is what that is in there for. That doesn't mean that you're going to call a snow day when we have six inches of snow. It's just in there in the event that we do have to, because there's no way we can operate safely, that we have a process that we will follow when that happens.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can't develop a policy for every single situation.
Well, that's why I don't want to have one department head have that authority and all the rest of them not.
I know, I get it. It's going to be uniform.
No, I agree, and I think that if a county decides to close down, and it's out of the employees' control, and the county understands that they're going to have to pay their employees.
What I would like to see is, before we kind of get this finalized, I would like to see a list of who can do their job from home and who can't, because that would be helpful, I think.
Maybe you ask for that with the computers.
Yeah. You know, because like a deeds, you know, because if you need a deed, you got to come in and get it, right? If you need a passport, you got to come in and get it, that kind of thing.
But I do like the idea of saying, hey, look, I'm coming upon each department to be open and accessible. So you're going to have to make that decision, but if you have employees that can work from remotely and produce a full day's work under those circumstances, as long as the office is available. So I think it addresses that concern for your point, is, hey, people need to be able to approach their government offices and get their needs met. That's what we're here for.
So then every computer, every employee that lives thirty miles away is going to want a computer.
I think we're digging too deep.
Yeah, I think it's...
I honestly think we're digging too deep, looking at...
If you don't cover it, working on contracts with unions, if you don't cover it, they're going to use it. They're going to dig it.
No, because if you don't stay at...
Terry, everywhere, the honest reality is that more and more people are going remote, and far from being less productive, they're finding out they're more productive. So it's, you know, I guess it's probably because they're not yakking to their fellow workers. I don't know. But no, I always thought it's done...
And they're always talking to their families.
Well, no, but, yeah, yeah, it's like, get away from me. They did lock, it's, I was starting to learn the productivity piece.
They're doing that, you know, they're doing, they're being more successful at home, but they're doing their washing, their dishes, and all this stuff.
I don't disagree, but here's the problem. You decide that you're going to close the county building, right? You've got some employees that can work from home and some that cannot.
Yeah.
You have to pay those that cannot, because you've chosen to close, and it's out of their control. But you're expecting some to work and some to have a day where the county pays for it. There is some inequality there.
I mean, just for myself.
So it gets a little bit...
Well, they don't have computers. If you don't want to take that risk, don't take a computer.
And I'm not sure that you have to have it one way or the other.
I don't know, but that's a great way to look at it either.
No, I don't.
I think if you say the county's closed, then it can be uniformly approached across everybody. And then if you say, hey, the buildings are open...
That's how we've done it in the past.
That's what I'm saying, though, but what I'm saying is, is if you make that decision, some people have the ability to work from home, but some don't. But you've got to compensate those people that don't.
No, I think you, at that point, you're calmed down. You just say, everybody's done. You don't have to work today, because the building's closed.
Right, but you want to be able to still function and still work when we close the county.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, when they want to, when they want to be open, and it's a snow day, but I have safety concerns for employees who can work remotely, we will open, but I want to be able to designate the employees that are far away to be able to work remotely, in conjunction with a consultation review or with one of the commissioners.
If we shut down, they don't have to work.
Yeah, so then you can pull the ripcord.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they're...
That's something that's...
Yeah, okay.
We've done that in the past, and that's, that's fine. Yeah, so I think you're digging too deep.
Well, no, she's being cautious. She's trying to make sure there's uniformity.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure people are being treated.
So why don't we, why don't we make this up again?
So what do we want to move forward with, huh? What do you need from me?
Nothing from you.
Like, as far as this...
The only thing I would like is just, can we get a list from the department heads about who can do this?
Who can do the remote.
All right, and then maybe if there was just language that said what the options are, as long... And I think what you want to say, these offices need to be open and functional.
Correct.
Now...
That's what the taxpayers pay for.
Right.
They're not, they're not paying for you to take the snow days if you have three inches of snow on the ground, or it's a little slippery up at Miami, I would say.
But if you're worried about certain employees, and they're on the list of remote employees, then I'm mechanism.
Coming from Rangeli or something.
Yeah, I'm mechanism.
That's down to...
So when asking for that information, are you looking to adopt something into this policy to include telework?
I'm thinking something like that, only because I would be, I would, I would feel, I don't know if, you know, the idea that you've made somebody come and they got killed or something, who would want that on their conscience? I mean, but everybody has a choice.
Well, right, everybody has a choice in, in the language, but...
Well, if they have a vacation day, and if they don't, then the choices don't get paid or risk your life. And all I'm saying is, if I've got a way to keep them working full steam, and I got an open office, I think win-win. I think everybody's good in that general.
Because the reason I'm asking is, if you're looking to incorporate some telework language into this, I can build that in as well.
Yeah, well, you know, come up with it, see what you come up with, and just be some list of names.
Or positions, not necessarily any positions.
My father went to school over at now Dicky Hall Sap House, and he, you know, where he lived. And he said that far from never closing school, there was one morning, he walked up, and they couldn't get the building warm enough, so they just turned around and sent him off. And I believe it.
When I was a kid, we were, we were military, right, Virginia, they got one inch of snow. The kids, the whole state's shut down, because they don't have the equipment. And we were all outside looking at this one inch.
I was in the Netherlands once, they got like three or four inches. I was coming back from Ireland. The amount of cars in the ditch, it was unbelievable. I was, you know, they're just, one of them spun out. He'd missed some trees, right? He had passed me, then I went by him. He was between two trees, and he sped up again after he got out of there, and passed me again.
Okay, so we covered this one up. Any further comments?
Nope, we'll bring it back next meeting.
Okay, we'll move to item number seven, is the ARPA project. Sue?
All right, so I wrote you a long memo, gentlemen. I want to start by just saying, I had a chance to meet with Mike, and we've got, I think we got a plan for the various septic and drainage projects that are going on. There are multiple ones. And so I sort of gave you an update there. The jail drainage... The jail drainage system design is done at some point, and I don't know what your thoughts are about when that should go to bid, but it will need to go to bid for the project itself. The design is done, there's a difference between design and construction, so.
So we hand this to these guys and say, what can you do for them?
No, this one is not, this one is clearly a bid where we have the design. We, we put it out to bid for construction, a septic construction or a drainage.
But won't they see that design?
They will see the design.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we give whoever's interested, this is what we want, and he tells us what you can do it for.
Yep, but it will have to go to bid because it's going for the project, so. Do you guys have thoughts?
No, I guess I get that.
Do you, do you have a, a plan for when you want the various septic systems and drainage systems put to bid?
I'm just guessing, I don't know this, but I would guess that it would be cheaper to do it when there was frozen ground than when there is, but.
Well, so it's a process though, you gotta post it for so long and, and get the word out and all of that, so.
I, I would propose that you, like the septic system, you put it up for bid in May. Along with the drains, you could put it up for bid in May, but the work wouldn't stop until the first of June, you know, in that, in that general area.
How long does it normally take to get this bid out and get it?
I was thinking April only because of giving time enough for it to get posted and then returned.
Particularly with all the construction going on, you don't wanna, yeah, they're getting it done next February.
Yeah, I think you'll wanna be out there sooner than later.
You think in April?
Yeah.
All right, I move.
They say in April, put the bid, put the bids out April to be done, the work be done the 30th of June.
Uh, no.
Huh?
That's too fast, isn't it? So you think if they got the bid, if we get the bid back in April, they could have the job done by the first of June?
No, 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 no.
Start.
Oh, okay, no, I thought I heard finished, so.
The, the whole idea, listen, listen, I'm gonna weigh in on this, because I've been doing this a little bit longer than the rest, some of the rest of you. That ground wants to be clear when they get a chance to go up to bid. You can't, you know, you're sick of a package out there and somebody goes, you go bid on that, and you're up there, look, it's got a foot and a half of snow, you have no idea what you're waiting in there.
No, I see.
So when the ground is clear, so that you can lay your visual eyes upon it, then you can bid an accurate bid without inflating it to the point, you know, so that you're covered. You can, you can deflate your numbers a little bit so that you're covered.
I was thinking late April, so, yeah.
Very well, how about April fifteenth, let's split it in?
Well, we're never the, we can say April fifteenth, you can say April fifteen, but for me, it's like, when the snow's off the ground, you know, you, you, you get a fifteen day process in there that they generally put it up for bid and then you get your bids back. You know, it, it's not, it's not, you know, what you're doing up here is not rocket science. It's not that you're gonna have some huge company come in here to do that. There, there are very small companies around here that can handle that just fine. And when you do do that septic system, one of the things that I talk about with mainland and I am gonna strongly recommend, is you just don't tear into that system. You're gonna do a section, you'll do fifty percent of the system while the other fifty percent is operating. You'll, you'll install your first three sets of beds, we'll say, and then, once those are installed, then you will unhook from the old system, tie it into the new system, and then do the second portion of the old system, so that you can't just go up there and tear it all apart, because you'd have pumps up there for, for generations, you know. So you can do that in, in a process which would work very fine and you, and it would be adequate to work with until you get to the end, you know.
Good advice.
So, um, one of the things that will need to happen is, I assume you have the design that's done. Do you have it, mainland have it?
Yes, I, the, the.
So could we get those in here too when they come in?
Yeah, I would assume, I would assume that they, because they sent it on a PDF, mainland did for the drainage, so I would assume that it's probably somewhere on the computer system up here that.
I don't think so.
Really?
So if you could make sure that, because I'm making that for the bid.
I, I have, I have a high probability of the PDF, there was some.
And the next one is a little tricky, because last time Mike talked to you about the inside the jail issue with the grease traps, and so we are, I had a discussion with Mike, I think the best way to put that one out is to do it in a RFP, Request for Proposal, so that we can let people that find these solutions come and tell us what they think the solution is and how much it might cost.
Yeah.
So I'm in the process of writing an RFP for that. Um, I think we can write that RFP sooner than later, because it's inside the jail, and, and then we can see what people come up with for solutions, so. Um, so that's, if you're okay with that, I'll put that out.
Yeah, do we need to make a motion on that?
On the bid?
On the RFP.
Do you wanna do it that way? You wanna us to try to get something drawn up from somebody?
Well, basically, we're not spending anything, we're just giving her the ability to tell her to send this out so they can come tell us what we will.
That, that's really, for tracking purposes, it's really up to her whether or not she wants to have a motion for an RFP.
I don't need to, as long as you guys agree that that's the process.
I agree with it.
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree.
Okay, and the next one, you know, once we have that RFP for the design, we may have to put that out for a bit at that point, what the, depending what the solution is.
So can we go back to the septic though, because Clyde had made a motion.
Oh, sorry.
And then we didn't finalize that.
Put them out in April, sometime in April.
About putting the, putting the.
To go out to bid.
Go out to bid in April.
Oh.
For the, the job, that Mike was just talking about. You had made a motion about it, but then it didn't go through.
So we want, withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And you can withdraw my motion, if we made another one when the snow's gone, to put it up for bid, is that what we're looking for?
Or you could leave it to Mike's and my discretion and it'll figure it out as soon as we can, I think.
I, for me, as, as an old contractor, I'm pretty well aware that when you're way, way out in the middle of a field and it's, you know, two and a half feet of snow, you know, you start adding money onto it just because you don't know what's out there.
You can't see.
When the ground's bad, then you can look at it and say, hey, that's, I know what I'm doing.
Okay.
So we don't need a motion on that?
So we just withdrew it and, that's good.
You guys got the authority to, all right, send it up for bid.
Okay, so you asked a question last time and I wanted to give you an answer to that, um, was how much interest our money has, that we have received has been bringing in. And so through December, we have that number, thanks to Diane, thank you very much. Um, it, we've brought in, incurred in interest, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
Per a month.
No, total.
Total, that's all we've brought in so far.
Yes, interest rates are not good right now, so.
But they would be brought.
But we have, that's through December, so obviously January.
Which bank is that through?
Uh. Bangor.
Bangor, so we haven't transferred the money yet?
We're trying to work with them to get a better interest rate.
Yeah, because, well, the other bank already had a better interest rate, it was already doubled. So why wouldn't we have transferred the money?
I'm not involved in that conversation yet.
Okay, thank you.
But I did wanna give you that number.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, the, there's a bunch of projects out there that are, we talked about last time. I'd like to give you an update on the laptop proposal that we had last time. It said eight last time, it's now at four. And Tiffany has verified the people that would have this.
So that's one that we.
And so the total is three thousand, it's written on your paper that I gave you, I think, three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents.
All right, I move we spend that one.
You make a motion if.
I spent three thousand.
And that is, just so you know, two ladies, I'm gonna probate myself, and there's gonna be a second supervisor for dispatch eventually, there's only one laptop currently up there, so I'll give that other supervisor a laptop, so that's for four. So Lance, you made a motion?
Yes, the number was three thousand one.
Three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents.
There you go, that's what I recommend we spend to buy those laptops.
Second motion.
And moved in second, we spent three thousand and.
One hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay, I don't see that on my sheet.
It's in here.
I'll send that, it's not on there.
Any further discussion on that motion? Yeah, gotcha, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of that motion, so signify. Okay, two to one.
All right, so the next.
I'm still not in favor of them, no.
So the next thing is the engineering of additional space at the jail for medical and psychological services, this is the engineering and design. And following our, our department head meeting that we had last week, um, it becomes really apparent that, that this would not be a, a space that would be conjoined to any kind of office facility space because of the security pieces that need to be in place. We had a long discussion about that. And so I really would say that would be a project that ought to move ahead through design and engineering phase, um, and that's thirty-eight thousand dollars. It will be attached to the jail, it's a part of the jail.
So we know that's gonna cost thirty-eight thousand dollars.
The design and engineering, we have a quote for.
Is it just one?
We have, he has multiple quotes, but.
But that was the best.
It's a, it's a, yes, and there aren't a lot of people that do it because it's specialized, it's a jail attachment, so.
I mean, are we, is, how time sensitive is this one?
Well, so, right now, I think it's pretty time sensitive, because they're, they're basically in a space they said is about a third of.
Yeah, it is, it's first.
Okay, I don't worry about it.
And there's no place, so HIPAA and the privacy rules are pretty tight right now because of the fact that it's, everybody's in everybody's pocket.
Yep, I make a motion that we did, uh, thirty-eight thousand dollars for design and engineering, the additional space at the deal for the medical and psychological space. Negative, moved in second, if we spend thirty-eight thousand dollars for the engineering, design and engineering at the jail, all those in favor? I'll vote for that, but I think we ought to be really cautious about spending monies if we're gonna do a project like the jail. So we're blowing money here like it's going out of style. And so far, how much have we spent, Sue, could you tell me?
So, previous to this meeting, you had spent nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, four hundred, it's, it's on that sheet, nine twenty-seven, four ninety-one.
Yep.
Yeah, I see it.
And, and so if you spend, if you approved all of these projects that are on the sheet, um, and we, I know we're gonna go one by one, but as, if you approve them all, you will have spent one million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
And twenty-five.
Can you say that number again, please?
One million.
Yep.
I have one of these sheets for you too, Tiffany, one million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
So the next one is the World War One Memorial Arch Project. Uh, they were asking for forty thousand dollars. The ladies are still very passionate and very busy. Um, they are out there trying to see if they can get some volunteers to do some parts of the project, um, some volunteer labor, various kinds of things. And they wanted me to convey to all of you that if you could see fit to approve up to, they're gonna do everything in their power to bring that number down. So I'm.
So what they're saying is, if we commit to forty, they're gonna try to reduce it for us?
They're gonna try to reduce, they've already got some.
What would the incentive be after we've given?
Um, other than they are extremely passionate about making sure this project can happen and they won't understand that they need to be frugal.
Yeah, I think, I think it's too extravagant.
I think forty is.
I make a motion that we, uh, do forty, up to forty thousand dollars for WWI Tag, Memorial Arch Project.
Guess that's not gonna be seconded. I guess that's gonna fail, come on. I don't, I still think it's too extravagant, they're, they're talking about moving earth, cutting trees, I don't, and packing spaces, I'm not sure all of that's necessary. And we don't know what the other, the project. The veterans up here with the bunkers.
Yeah, he was gonna give us some stuff on that.
They might be able to do it, so. They might, so I'm, I'm gonna be patient and wait.
Yeah, and also they, we still got some winter left, that's not a huge, like, jump out now.
I don't think that's important.
You got some winter left, but it also, you, you understand that a lot of these people that they've got lined up have a long waiting list of projects that they're doing, so you just gotta be, you gotta be thoughtful about that too.
Yeah.
All right, so the next one is the Safe Voices, and the, the director that came last time and spoke to you about that, she did diligence, you, I, I don't know if I shared with you, I think I shared with all of you a copy of the letter that she sent to all the towns. Farmington is contributing ten thousand dollars towards that project. It is a very large project, um, in fact, it's one point, uh, one point eight million dollar project. She's asking the county for seventy-five thousand dollars. And she has sent a letter to all of the municipalities. The only one she's got a commitment from is the town of Farmington.
What we did last time is, we committed to fifty, right?
Up to.
Up to fifty and wanted her, so she's raised ten of the other, right, that, that we did? And, um, yeah, that's sixty she's had, do, do you think we should, um?
So she raised ten, she had that in the proposal, so she knew that was coming.
Oh, she knew the ten was coming already?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's been in your budget for a couple of years now.
Okay, so she still is short that twenty, right?
She was supposed to also, Sue, sent you a list of towns that use that. She said Farmington.
Yeah, she said she could, twenty-five percent.
Well, I think you just added it up.
No, no, she was saying that she had all that information when she was here.
She, what she has is information, she didn't call me and talk to me about that. She has information on the people that use the shelter.
Right.
They don't have a shelter right now.
Right.
So these are people that she's aware, because she does a tri-county. I mean, Andy can probably speak better to this than I can, but, um, that are using services from a shelter, a women's shelter, a, a safe shelter.
That's why I wanted those numbers, Sue, because if I were in a town, say Phillips, and they hadn't used any shelter in many, many years, why would I contribute? Out of the twenty-one towns in Franklin County? If I were a town like Farmington.
Well, better, better yet, oh, Terry, if Phillips did use it and didn't pay, then that means somebody else had to pick it up, right?
That happens a lot.
That's, that happens far more than the other way, I would think.
So here's what I believe the scenario is, Terry, if you wanna know the truth. If you live in Phillips, Maine, and you know the only shelters in Auburn, you're probably not going.
Yes, too far away.
It's too far away and you'll just continue with life as it is, whether it's good or not.
Okay, I like the input of the Sheriff's Department, we, when I was in Wilton and Vol, um, we got that.
How about we at least, 'cause we, we didn't give it to her, but we committed to it, fifty.
You didn't vote on it.
Right, so why don't we just vote the fifty in, right? And then say, you know, give it, 'cause she sent the letters out, that gives us some time to see if they're gonna come back, maybe, you know, get through a little more, trying to get twenty.
Or you could revisit it at the next meeting.
Yeah, whatever, so.
What develops.
So anyway, I move that we, we cut out the check for fifty and let, and let, let her keep working for a bit.
Well, the reason I won't support that is because we said up to, and she hasn't done her homework yet and gotten responses from other towns.
Well, the way I remember, as I said, I, I told her, I know I told her that I'm committing to fifty thousand dollars. And that's the way, I think that was actually my exact language, you can look it up, but.
But there wasn't any motion?
No.
To agree or to?
Anyway, I'm making it now, so.
I'm kinda hesitant on this thing. We voted not to support outside agencies, and I was against it because we need to have some good outside agencies, and this is one of them. And now, we're gonna give money to an outside agent. And we're going against the rules that were spent and set in this room about outside agencies.
So, I, I, I just, I know this project is a good project. And I know what they're trying to do. But it's going to come a limit in a time when people have got to look over themselves.
But the issue here is, is, was I understanding, because I made it pretty clear that this is one-time stuff. This was a one-time spend, is to get that one-point-eight bill. And I specifically said, you're not coming back for more. And her answer was, no.
Well, she will if you only give the fifty thousand, she'll come back for more, probably.
Well, she might, or might not, but the point was, that fifty is part of this whole project of one-point-eight million dollars, right?
Brings in a lot of money for her.
Her mother, me about it, answers I, she had, I had it on the newspaper. It clearly stated that they have monies from the federal government to do this project. They had to cut a couple of things because they had wanted more, had a bigger wish list than they had monies for. So they're going to use our money. The APRA money to put back what they cut out. In other words, the facility, they have funds to build it. They wanted to put back, I think it was air conditioning and a bunch of other stuff. And that's what they're going to use, wanted to use the seventy-five more, so it's not.
I think you'll read that, isn't it, or something?
I don't know.
I, I, I read the article in, I didn't.
Anyway, I gave my word, I'm making.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, that's why I was, and I'm still, I'm going to maintain that we got, we've got to be careful. We're spending this money. And we've got these projects that we want to save the taxpayer money for. And we're not going to have funds for it, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to second that.
I believe at the last meeting, you mentioned that you'd like the sheriff's input, but he provided some input at the last meeting on the need for, for this. And it's, they're asking for four percent or less than four percent of the project cost. And so if you're trying to multiply your investment in the community, you're putting in four percent and you're getting a one-point-eight million dollar asset in the community. That's a good, that's a good return on investment.
A challenge. They, they, they have the money to build the facility. They don't need our money. It's the money they want from the county to put the things back that they cut out. So we don't need to do it. I think we can have monies, they take these monies and better spend them at the jail to do all that project that we wanted to make it safer for, at least the Sheriff's Department. We don't know what that's going to cost, but it isn't going to cost a million dollars. It's going to cost a lot more than that, so.
Well, that's, that's the other thing you've got to contend with somewhat, Terry, is, I mean, the APRA money was not, you know, a, a sheriff's department budget. So you, you know.
But that's something we can see in the future.
No, I, I'm not, I'm, I, you know, we're, we're talking about it. I'm, I'm, I want to do something there, right? But it's, you can't exclude the rest of a community in a way by saying, well, you know. What's that?
We haven't been excluded.
No, but it, it's a bit like this. It's a bit like somebody stands up, they're, they've been getting in line, okay, here's your check, right? And then they come right back again and the other people behind them going, do I even get to ask? I see it a little bit that way, right? Because there's some intertwining there. Yeah, so. But no, for me, it just, it does come down, at the end of the day, that's what I promised I would do, so that's my motion.
Can we think about not necessarily ruling this project out? But maybe because we do have potentially a large project that we know is going to eat up a lot of funds waiting on this decision. And if we have it, then we revisit it and we don't take it off the table necessarily.
That's what I want to do.
We just don't make a decision right now about this project.
So I will.
Or any of them.
I will say this project, and, and I know Franklin County quite well. And like I said, I, I think that there are probably people all in every municipal organization in this county that if there was a shelter in Franklin County, they might have used it. In every municipal organization.
She should have those records. She said she had all that information.
And I tell you, she's, I'm positive she has the ones that have gone to shelters. She's not going to know if in Perkins Plantation, somebody's beating up on their wife. There, she's not going to know that.
They can read the coordinates to get that.
Right. Maybe.
Yeah.
If it gets to that.
If it gets to.
I move that we, I move that we give fifty thousand dollars that we, that I agree to.
I'll second his motion on fifty thousand at this time. And that if she can prove to Terry what she needs, he can come back with the twenty-five.
The only, I'm okay with that, Clyde, the only thing is, it's like, we're either going to give the fifty or not. If you still want her to come back, then let's wait on that, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. Let's wait on these proposals. Because I don't think they're.
You're going to keep waiting and waiting, you're going to lose your money.
Where's the money going? It should be in the bank.
Federal government, it's going to take it right back.
Oh, oh. Well, we're all in trouble, Clyde.
Oh, that happens, the.
But.
Countries and.
So, so the question, Clyde, is if I make the motion, you're going to say, let's spend it today unconditional? Let's just do it. Here's your check.
It's not unconditional. What are you going, get your own motion?
No. No, I'm saying.
You sound like it to me.
No, I'm saying I want to have her get the check for fifty thousand dollars. I don't want the motion to say, um, yes, we'll write the check out when she gives the information to Terry and satisfies him. Which is the way I just understood that you said that.
I would draw my motion. I would draw that, Terry.
Okay, so, I move that we spend fifty, we give fifty thousand dollars.
Why do we need to do that now?
Like, I, like I said, Terry, for me, I made the promise, and that's what I'm going to do, so.
Yeah, but I want it back now, but I want to wait. I don't understand why it's so important that we spend money now. Why can't we wait and assess these projects at a later date? Why do we have to bring them up every two weeks? Kind of didn't pay suit.
We, we, we just, we just.
Catch them, it's kind of why we hired her to keep us going.
Well, there's certainly been additional information that's come in over the last two weeks, Terry. Which is sort of what you guys asked her. And just for the record, you also promised her fifty thousand dollars at the last meeting.
But she hasn't delivered my information.
What she said to you at the end, so what you want from me is for me to reach out to the towns. Remember, she clarified that.
Right.
And you said yes.
Right.
There wasn't any second part of that.
Oh, I asked for an information.
Yeah, but you asked for that earlier than when I said that, the, the way I remember.
Yeah, but I never seen.
I actually think if you roll the tape, if they had the tape, you will see, I made that commitment and you said, I agree with Lance.
Yeah, yeah, something similar to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm, I said I'm, I'm for that project. I really am. I just think we ought to stop spending money now. I don't see the purpose for this.
It might keep people out of jail.
All right, all right.
Although at that expense.
If that, I'll hold off a couple of weeks, as you can see if you can get some of the information, if that'll make everybody happy, so. I would.
It'll make me happy. I just, I'll go along, but I, I can't pick up your motion to do it right. What? Every time changes or something, I don't know. I, I want to second your motion.
Okay.
But you won't let me.
You were remending it. I move that we give that, the, the, the shelter fifty thousand dollars.
Second motion.
All right.
Been moved in seconded, that we give the shelter fifty thousand dollars. All those in favor? So signify. Those opposed, two to one.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right.
So you asked for some additional information on the fueling system.
Yes.
So I can provide that to you. Um, I think I actually put it in your thing there. The town of Farmington, um, the use, based on usage. Thirty-three percent of the usage of the current fueling system is the town of Farmington. And sixty-six point three-four percent is the county. And so I have reached out to the town, I mean, I've not heard back from them yet. So I'm recommending that you not do that project tonight, but I did want to share with you that information. And that is how it breaks down usage wise. So, um, basically, if, if the most expensive part of the, the quotes that we had was accepted, it's five and, and ten. So it's a two to, two to one.
And why is it, I wonder why, I forgot to ask that question last time. Is Farmington the only town that's, we're making a deal with in the county? One of the twenty-one municipalities. Do they have size capacity for burning?
It's probably the proximity. It's located in the town of Farmington, the fueling system. If you had to drive too far to get to the fueling system.
It's going to use its fuel. It makes a whole lot of sense, doesn't it? Yeah.
When I worked in Auburn, I bought fuel, whichever location, either there or here. Whichever was the cheapest. Yeah, I'd look at the prices. But anyhow, I've just asked, it bothers me that their, town of Farmington is getting, and that's a pretty good deal, I think. And anyhow, I've just, that's enough.
So originally, my understanding is they gave you the fueling system.
Yeah.
So they gave it to the county, so that's probably, it's probably old history.
Yeah, yeah, it's a deal that somebody made way back when. No doubt.
So the last two projects are two broadband projects. I'd like to take them separately. The broadband project for Washington and Perkins Plantation. And I, I wrote this into you, in here, based on the current census. And the most current census is an estimate, because they did that census during the beginning of COVID and they questioned the data. And so the most current census says that that's approximately forty-six hundred residents in the four towns that would be benefiting from that project. Because that's a project for Weld, Perkins Plantation, Washington Plantation, I may have swapped those two geographically, and Wilton. Okay, and it is a very large, six million dollar project. The part you're being asked to consider is the Washington and Perkins Plantation project for two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. And, and I, I just want to make sure you understand that it is a four-town commitment project. One project that encompasses four municipalities.
Weld and Wilton?
Weld, Wilton, Perkins.
And the two plantations.
The two plantations.
Plantation.
I'm considering those.
The two forty is a plantation part, right?
It is. Weld and Wilton are paying for their, they've contributed funds in addition to the, I mean, they, they did a good contribution. I can pull that out or ask Charlie. He probably knows about the town of the city.
Weld has committed to invest in the broadband solution. Wilton, at town meeting, they voted unanimously to commit to invest in a broadband solution. So Wilton is up to three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Their share of the project.
Three fifteen. And Weld is?
Two eighty-seven.
Two eighty-seven? From a little teeny town, wow.
I still think it's too much money. Okay, I want to do this project, but I don't want to spend the APRA money to do it. I want it to come out of the TIF, which is part of what that's for.
Definitely, it qualifies for the TIF, but very squarely qualifies for the APRA.
Yeah, but there's stuff that the APRA can qualify for that that can't. And that gets into the line of what we can use that for down the road. So I vote, I, I move that we go forward with two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but out of the TIF fund.
If the state, the state has a lot of funds coming to it from the federal government.
Yes.
And the, the big proponents, the big buckets for APRA are water, sewer, broadband. This checks that broadband box.
Yeah.
If the state sees that this county is willing to invest some of their APRA dollars in a broadband solution, that catches their attention.
Does it, does it make a difference on whether it's APRA or non-APR?
I think it does. I think it does.
Why, why does it?
Because, just what I've said, the, the buckets are water, sewer, broadband. That's what the federal government wants to see, that's what the state wants to see. And if we can show that the leadership in this county is willing to invest some of these APRA dollars in a broadband solution, we will catch their attention and will help our future projects that we are designing or will be designing.
Could you split that money out so that they could see? I mean, I think another option is to split it out, take part of it out, a different part of it out. And you definitely.
But wait, I mean, wait, I mean, no, eventually, I'll wish you evidence of that.
That's what my idea was, could we split that up between TIF and?
Sure. Well, the. Well, the logic, though, doesn't flow, because that's saying we're only half committed, right? I mean, if you're, if you're at the state, we're only committing half out of the APRA, then maybe.
Yes, you're not calling it, you're, you're showing some investment of the APRA dollars in a broadband solution. That's the important thing, some investment.
I think that is the important part as far as the state is concerned. They'll see that you're.
I mean, is there somewhere you've got, kind of some way you can show me that that's true?
Talk to DECD, Department of Economic and Development.
So if I say, look, we've, we're committing two hundred and forty thousand dollars to the fund, they're going to ask me where it's coming from?
I think we should write them a letter to explain how we're funding it.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's going to change their decision on what they will help us with in those buckets?
I, I think it will significantly influence their attention towards our, our county.
That's why Congress got out of this, if they couldn't show that.
I, I think we, we write them a letter to make sure that they get that that means we're invested enough. So if there's some of that, that other pool of money that's not ours, the two hundred and plus million dollars that we might be able to access that for.
Compete for that.
And you're saying without that, without APRA, we can't compete?
It would be in a better position to compete, so.
I agree. But I do think you can split it.
Then I think that's what I'm going to go for.
So Lance, are you going to keep your motion?
Hold on, hold on.
I'm thinking. Lance made the motion.
I made the motion on the two forty out of the TIF, so I'd have to withdraw that. What's the threshold? I mean, so, the only reason I'm struggling with this, right, is they need to see that we are committed, right? What does that mean? So, no, no, I mean, what if I threw in ten thousand for APRA? I, I'm saying, so where is the, this is commitment, this isn't commitment line?
Bunch of cheap.
Just the fact that some money, APRA funds are going towards this.
And so that's it?
They're going to know the size of the project. They're very familiar with it. We're going to be applying to them in, on March twentieth for support, additional support for this project. And if we can show the county is, is committed to, you know, their own solution, sharing their own solution, and something from the APRA, that's like.
Yeah, but so, okay, so, but you, you haven't given me a line. You said, it has to be, if I'm not mistaken, and that's what I heard, is that, you know, we have to show we're putting some of this APRA money in there. Well, what, I mean, what if I said, all right, let's do forty. Let's do the other two hundred out of the TIF.
Yeah, you can, you can do that.
Is that going to make a difference, though?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
I think you want to show, you know, you want to see it in the paper. The commissioners are investing their APRA dollars.
Okay, that's what I was getting, that's what I was getting.
And it, and it's significant enough, so it shows up.
Yes, yes.
But I do think we should not take this for chance, that they're going to see it in the paper, we write them a letter.
So we, before we do, we write the letter? This would be your recommendation?
My, my recommendation is before the March submission of another grant request, we write a letter to say, we're making a significant contribution.
We've committed, the county has committed to invest in this solution for this, this project.
So if I make a motion saying two hundred out of the thousand out of the TIF, forty thousand out of APRA, that satisfies you?
Yeah, yeah, that, that would, um, yeah.
All right, that's my motion.
Seconding motion. And moved in seconded. Any further discussion? I just forgot to mention, last time we met, and we talked about satellites. I haven't, I haven't seen a satellite hit by a branch yet.
Terry, can I interrupt? They just fell out of the sky last week.
Yeah.
There was a solar flare and a dozen satellite satellites went in the rain.
Yeah.
And how many are still left, Jim?
I don't know. You'll have to call them out.
There's one up, there's one up in Strong. I can see it every, every night.
Well, the thing about the satellites is seventy-five percent of the globe is water, so there's a three-quarters chance that's where they're coming down.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not worried about it. But they know you're here. I don't, I don't trust the power deliverer that we have in this area. And branches come down constantly. I mean, I live on Markham Hill in Wilton, and we're out of power weekly. So I predict that this, I predict that this, and we ought to start using broadband, because it's nothing more than I feed into that. That's what it is. And there are many, many deliverers.
differently.
Okay, point minute six.
Okay.
So do we vote?
So no, we're going to do it now.
Okay.
So all those in favor of Lance and Ty's motion, so signify.
One, 50,000.
200,000 out of the TIF, 40,000?
Oh, yeah, right. Oh, yeah, okay. Been bouncing around some on.
Two. Opposed?
One.
Two, one.
It's a waste of money. You're going to, we're all going to look silly when the next phase of information comes out. Spending millions of dollars. Okay.
So the last broadband project is, um, that's been presented is a county-wide project for $40,000 for planning. Um, and that really is to keep the consultant on so that they can continue to, um, explore with other towns' interests. I know Charlie is in the process of meeting with select groups right now. Um, Rangeli's going to do a project. They, they're committed to that. Um, I also understand that industry is exploring projects. Chestamills got a committee started to talk about broadband. I'm hoping some of the other towns do as well, at least get a committee started. Um, but this is a clearly a planning
You know, we've already spent $50,000 in the county on planning. So with this 40, right, uh, how much is Wilton pitching at? To keep this project going?
They're putting in 315.
Yeah, but we just put in 240. That's their part for the town. I'm talking about the planning piece.
This is to bring us forward to, to allow us to...
As a county.
This is to bring... Planning, design for other, you know, we're not done. We've got 21...
Let me, let me clarify this. So you're asking for $40,000 from the county that the county will fund going to take this to the towns, to take the ideas to the towns?
To towns and UTs. I mean, they'll all be included. It's going to be...
So why don't, why shouldn't they have some skin in the game?
They will have skin in the game when the project gets done, but this is...
Well, why wouldn't they have skin in the game in, in the 40,000?
This, this is a chance for the commissioners to work on behalf of their constituents. The towns fund the county budget.
That makes $90,000 we've done for this. We've already given 50 to planning, and now you want another 40?
Yeah.
Then $90,000 to plan. We got a plan downstairs, Charlie, that I doubt that anybody has read. Have you read it?
What?
The plan?
No.
The broadband?
So, so Terry, what did you get for that $50,000 investment?
We got a book about that thickness downstairs collecting dust.
It's actually quite a bit thicker than that. It's 510 pages. And what it does is it measures the whole county. And so what it has yielded is a $7 million broadband project in Rangeli and a $6 million project, project in Weld, Wilton, Temple, and Perkins. 50,000 plus everything else you put into, into this, and you've got 13 and a half million dollars of infrastructure investment in your community. That's a good return. If it's not for you, um, it is for everyone else in the community.
No, 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 I, I don't, I don't go along with this project. I think you had enough monies. It should be all well-funded with the 50,000 you already had and the book downstairs that did all the documentation about where the broadband is.
That was four and a half years ago, and those are the resulting projects from that plan. And we need to keep going. We got to update the plan. Technology's changed. The, the criteria for the federal government to compete for these funds, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We happen to have a head start from your sound investment from four years ago.
So what's the, how time-sensitive is this?
It needs a vote today because it's, we're, we're putting an application together from March 20th to the state to, um, affect the Weld-Wilton project.
So that's a month from now, right?
Yeah.
If you don't get the 40, what happens?
We might as well tap out.
What if I gave you 20 and I wanted you to raise the other 20?
Lance, I am being very frugal with this.
I'm just, I'm feeling...
I understand, I understand. I am being very frugal. I have broken this out. I have not wrapped up. I mean, we are, we have a commitment from the state to match 40, if we can raise 40.
30.
Okay, so that's...
So it's a one-to-one. Again, it's a, you're not spending money, you're investing money. You're putting it into this and you're drawing an equal amount into, um, your county, uh, projects. Magnify.
All right, I move that we take 40 out of the TIF for that, the 40 that we didn't take before, so. Now, is that going to be a problem with state match where it comes from?
No.
So that's 50 and 120 we gave them last year, so it's 170. Well, that's two different issue what you want with the 120, right?
The 120 is everything else that we're doing in addition to the broadband. But the workforce development, housing, that's two projects, one in Rangeli, one on the Route 27 corridor. We, childcare is a huge issue. How do we get people back into the workforce? We're working on that. Um, yes.
And that hasn't been presented here yet?
No.
Nope.
Lance is, you make that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second his motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Comes out of the TIF.
Yep.
Out of the TIF.
All in favor of the motion, so signify. Those opposed?
We've got to keep going forward today.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I don't see it going forward. I'm sorry.
I can't see you either, William. What can you...
I have one more thing, and this was an oversight from the last meeting. You approved, um, the vehicles, the hybrid vehicles last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
But we really need to make a motion to approve the equipment, the specialized equipment, the communication, all that equipment. It's 9,000. I wrote it down. 9,000. I said I wrote it down. Should have written it on the sheet, I guess. 9,200. I did. It is $9,820 for each vehicle, so it comes out to $49,100. Because you can't really have cruises without all of that equipment. I just need you to make a motion because even though you sort of implied that the equipment would be here, it wasn't, it wasn't...
I move that we spent $49,100 for the hybrid vehicles.
Second motion.
Moved in second that we spent $49,100. Sure that's enough?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of the motion, so signify.
That don't include the dog.
It doesn't include the dog.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
All right. Uh, review of current proposals and updates.
Mike?
Do we, uh, can we?
Mike was here for Schoolhouse Road. Schoolhouse Road is supposed to be on Zoom and they're not, so.
Okay, so we don't need to talk?
I don't know that we need to discuss it because they were the ones that called it as part of the meeting. They wanted it on there because they don't agree with your decision that you made.
Well, we're talking about the schoolhouse bridge. Which one we talking about now?
Schoolhouse Road Bridge, yes. The bridge.
Second.
The bridge project that you guys decided initially that you were going to go ahead and repair and then you decided not to.
All right, because there is another schoolhouse bridge, that's it.
This is the one that you had?
Where the old schoolhouses up on, beyond that bridge up there.
No, this was Joe, I believe it's Joe Richmond who is the landlord.
I didn't want to make sure we got that name.
It's that one. They requested to be on the agenda, but not on...
I believe, I made a motion that we dropped that in that.
We did, but they wanted to come back on.
They basically have come back and said, you guys have had it, it's yours, you got to fix it.
They still feel strongly that the county is responsible for repairing the bridge.
According to the DHA, so I don't, I'm aware of that. We don't need to discuss it because they're not here.
We don't need to because they want it.
So we can move on to the, uh, opening of the bids for the Freeman Township David.
Yes.
So we'll do so now. We only have one bid. This is that Center Hill Road? No, 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 it's...
Freeman Ridge.
Freeman Ridge, I got you. What we're talking about? By the bottling company.
How much, Alan?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. $93,769 and 94 cents. So this is paid out.
With that Freeman Ridge?
Yes.
That's what you want to do?
Yeah.
Well, that's on there.
I made a motion. We spent $93,769 and 94 cents for Freeman Ridge David. Would it suitable to pay it?
And it comes out of?
What we're, we're not paving the whole bridge. What we're doing is, is we're doing a repave on the first section.
Okay.
And then we're adding another 500 feet on, onto that to get beyond the first house.
Yep. Okay, second. Okay, moved in second that we spent $93,769 and 94 cents. All those in favor? So, um, greetings, everyone. You want?
Yes.
Sure.
I don't need that.
I was thinking about anything related to gasoline.
I am, so this is lenient, too.
And gentlemen, you did note their contract, the bid price was based upon the price of the liquid hot top that they have as of current. If it should go crazy, then, you know, we're going to have to pay the difference. And if liquid hot top, not in the paving itself or any of that, but adjust the additional cost of the...
What does go crazy? I mean, no, it doesn't, is it any increase we bought at the bite or?
Yes.
What is, okay, what is the increase set?
There is, if you look at your contract, it says whatever the price, if it spikes, it's just like the price of gas, you know, based upon, based upon $3.05. Then if it spikes to $5, they can't, they can't do it. And it's all, you've signed them all the time.
No, I was just wondering. All right. I always like to know about these terms, all kinds of things that people say. What do you mean by that? Must be a legal definition somewhere. Okay. Right now, the cost is $650 for the liquid asphalt. Anyway, seconded, we've...
Did we vote on it?
Yes, we did.
I've seen the one that...
We're done with that anyhow.
Yep.
So we have any miscellaneous?
Yes. Okay, so the Axelson abatement. Remember a while back, they came in front of us, um, the name Kerry Keith and Axelson, they came and they debated, and we said you need to take it.
Oh, the two fighting up in Rangeli?
Yes, back a while ago. So they have, we have to bring it back to the commissioners for a hearing. They've estimated it's going to be about two hours, and they have offered two dates, May 3rd or May 10th. May 3rd is a commissioners meeting. May 10th would be a special meeting.
I'd rather do the special meeting.
I would do it as a special meeting because it's going to be two plus hours.
Can we just tell them to stop arguing at some point?
So you tell me what you want to do there and I'll schedule it.
Well, last time, if I remember correctly, the guy had kind of his attorney with him and basically, or no, he, unadvised with his attorney, he more or less was like, I'm just here, but it ain't going to matter because my attorney said blah, 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 right?
Yeah, you're not going to make it work.
And then they removed you from the other part of that process, but then they have to bring it back to you.
What do they have to bring back to?
I, I don't know how that all works. I just know that we have to, they have to bring it back to you.
I'll put another couple hours in there so I can argue with my brother in front of everybody.
So what do we want to do? May 10th? Do you want to do a special meeting?
I move that we, uh, set May 10th aside for the, uh, the great fight.
And do we have a preferred time that you'd like this? Do you want to do like a 3:15?
3:15, yeah. Although, Clay, I will try to in the summer swap back at the school so we can do it in the mornings for you.
But it will still be, it'll still be in school during this, so we'll try for 3:15. Okay.
It will be you, 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night. Because...
So I bring some boxing gloves.
I'll send you something with it.
I mean, I want you to find out.
And I have a second miscellaneous.
I know.
So under that folder, you have a job description for, under this brown folder here. I think it's under there.
Yeah.
Go ahead, put it. The job description for the, um, secretary for deeds. We, Sue and I sat down and we revised the job description ahead of soliciting for that position. So we'd just like you to approve that because that's how the process works.
I move that we approve that. Second motion. Have you read it yet? Yeah, I do. No. Who would have read it? I didn't read it yet. I'd rather read it.
You can read it.
Same, same thing, is it?
It's, yeah, some of the languages have been updated and some of the tasks, some of there, there was some stuff in there that wasn't necessary and some of it was just reworded.
Yeah.
It wasn't a huge change, but it'll more accurately represent.
I'd like to ask you a question. How come all their names are on there?
Yeah.
Because nobody has video, but they're all listening.
Oh, they're listening?
Yep.
Every word we said. And they're seeing us over here? Yeah?
No, they can see you here, too. You just can't see them because they're on their phone.
That's going to be on my Bluetooth. Hey, we're movie stars, boy. You got to get royalties. I am? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Dancing was giving me...
Right. Are you still looking, Terry?
I'm going to look. Uh, I'd rather bring this back up next minute. Do you, you need it before then?
Well, Sue would really like to get the position out there. She wanted to finalize the job description first. Do you want me to get, I can take a minute and give you the old job description so you can look at the changes?
Yeah, I have my manual right here.
Okay, so you probably have...
I'll look through it here. Mike, Dan. You heard us talk?
Yeah.
Looks like you're in your cell.
Turn it off. Oh.
I am fit.
So what are we doing with this?
They already approved it, so.
We haven't done, yeah, we haven't voted.
We haven't voted.
All right. All those, you made a motion to accept it. And I said, you said it. So all those in favor of the motion? I'll stay. I'm going to put it, my two-read bond. In the future, if you just send that stuff to me on an email, then I'll read it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't apologize.
You'll probably fault with that if you did.
You have anything else on the miscellaneous?
That is all I have.
Okay, then. Yeah, we got to go back to these two executive sessions, right?
Yes, we do. Which one, well, let's do Andy because he's right here. So we'll do the DA's office first.
What do you want to do?
And make a motion.
Second one.
Oh, that's right. And make a motion. We go to executive session, one MRSA, 4056A, personal matter, DA's office. And I'm sorry, I didn't read that to...
I'll second that motion.
Get you up quicker.
All in favor of that motion?